Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with the Lordy and Moore's Parade. I'm Jay Carl LaRocque. The acronym is ANPAC and the Chief Judge of Council of Court. Today is Class 74. Class 74. What did we learn in Class 73? Well, we were taking a deep dive, right? We're trying to get into an understanding, an overstanding, and an inner standing as to why the Moors of the 21st century have deposited their international law with the United Nations Charter, right? And what is international law? Treaties, constitutions, right? We started understanding the fundamentals that France, because of the Treaty of Fairs in 1912, had the power over all treaties, conventions, and arrangements. And through that treaty, France came in and told the United States of America and the other signatory powers that were trying to establish the Charter that they shall, they shall enact the Charter in the name of France. And France said, "They shall oversee it." This is the reason why you see French letters and a lot of international law. Even if you read a document in English that has several French words in it, nonetheless, to remind the world that France still has power, even over a lot of these international law documents, resolutions, right? It's because France has a lot of, I guess you would say, opportunity to negotiate because France ran the world for so long, right? France knows how to negotiate Moors treaties. But guess who is now learning how to negotiate Moors treaties? Moors, right? So the only thing that Moors needed was practice, right? Nobedra Lee said to learn from the colonists, i.e. the Europeans. That way, we can learn how to run governments. France can teach us a lot. That's not to say that Moors aren't in favor of France. But France has taught us a lot on how to enforce Moroccan treaties, right? So if we take the time to study the history of France and Morocco, starting in the year 1631, leading all the way up into the 21st century, you can learn a lot about how to govern and organize Jewish society because France was running the whole world for quite some time, alright? So we have to continuously learn from the Europeans, the same way Nobedra Lee said we have to learn. It doesn't mean we have to totally imitate, but we also have to learn how to participate in international law and learn how to get back to the table of nations. What type of nations? Nation-states, right? Yes, it's about your consanguinity, but who represents you on an international stage? Your state, that's who represents you and the competent authority of that state, right? So Class 73 was a deep dive to make sure the Moors have a fundamental understanding, at the very least, as to why we have to deposit our treaties and our constitutions with the Charter members, more specifically Article 102 with the Secretary, right? It's not something that we have a choice to do. No, we have no choice. Why do I say that? If you take a look at cases such as France versus United States of America, 1952, how is it that France, who had a contentious dispute with the United States of America, how were they able to utilize the International Court of Justice judges? How? It's because France had deposited Constitution with the United Nations. France ratified, deposited, promulgated the International Court of Justice statutes of 1946, right? So they're enacting international law. So France could bring their dispute to the ICJ because they deposited Constitution and all their international law with the United Nations. Who else brought us a case against the United States of America?
Germany.
Germany, right? Germany versus United States of America, 1999, 2001, right? Mexico versus United States of America in 2003. Nicaragua versus United States of America, 1986. Iran versus United States of America, I believe in the year 2020. Look these cases up. What do all these states have in common other than having a contentious dispute with the United States of America? All those states deposited Constitution and all their international law with the United Nations. So how is it that Moors are going to be able to utilize their Council of Courts and their state laws against the United States of America? We're gonna be, we have to now deposit our Constitution, all our international law with the United Nations, just like all other states on planet Earth, right? That's the only way to enforce our laws, ultimately give them back to the United States and the United States of America in supervening the impossibility of performance of our own Council of Court orders, right? Judgments, opinions, decrees. We have to now take it to the World Court. And if we don't deposit our international law, the United Nations first, and the ICJ can't even take the time, even here, it's ours. They won't recognize us. Why? Because we haven't recognized them. Ratification, depository promulgation, we must recognize them in order for them to recognize us. It's a pen game. It's called politics. Politics is with a pen, not with your mouth. Your divinity can only get you halfway. The rest is all about politics, right? Rights indigenous people, Article 5 talked about what? Political, legal, economic, social, and cultural, right? Powers of the state, Article 5 of the Act of the Rights Indigenous People of 2007. Go look it up. It's about politics first. And politics is with a pen. That's the name of the game. You remember the movie when they talked about the precious, right? What's the name of that movie? Talked about the precious, the ring, they was chasing around the ring. Lord of the Rings, right? You had all these people fighting over a ring that looked like a wedding ring, right? It's just a round, gold ring. What was the ring about? Why were y'all chasing down the ring? It represented power. And what's the ring? The pen that controls all of the treaties, controls land. The precious is what? Consanguinity in a pen through a constitution and your laws. In any contract that you read, there's always someone superior in the contract and someone subordinate. When two parties sign a contract, there's no such thing as a 50-50 contract. Someone is always superior in the contract, right? And the Moors are always superior in our treaties, always. And everyone is subordinate to our treaties. So the 12 signatory powers that sign off on our treaties are subordinate perpetually until when? Until they abandon our treaties. If they walk away from the treaty, then we don't have the powers over them, right? But the United States of America, the United States is different. Why? Because they're claiming to be the citizens of the United States of America. They're not claiming to be British no more. They're claiming that their nationality is what? The United States of America. Take the time to look at a passport. If you look at their passport, look in the inside of it where it says nationality. And it will spell out United States of America as a nationality. They're not claiming to be British no more. They're not claiming to be Portuguese no more. They're not claiming to be Polish anymore, German, right? Russian, Scandinavian. They're not claiming to be these nationalities no more, right? They're ex-patriots of Europe. They committed what you call an excheat. They exceeded their own bloodlines. Because they did what? They pledged their allegiance to the United States of America to go on the nationality of the United States of America. So you must understand, Moors. The United States of America is subordinate in the contract. Who's superior to the contract? Moors. What type of Moors? Moroccans. But more specifically, who gets to govern over Moroccan Moors? Moor state governments that are competent, right? And what makes you competent? Your ratified, deposited, promulgated Constitution has been deposited where? With the United Nations in accordance to Article 102. That's the only way we can be competent. And that's the only way we can enforce our Council of Courts, alright? Okay, let's go ahead and get into the class. Okay, so you know, ANPAC opens up with the Constitution. The Constitution is put in our mind. It's the only way for you to be competent. Constitutions is what makes you competent. Not a Constitution just have in your hand, but a Constitution has been ratified through its three branches of government. Through the legislative branch is passed over to the executive branch. The executive branch signs it into law. Then you take that Constitution, you deposit it with the international, right? Forums, commonly known as the Secretary of the Charter. Now, once it's been deposited with the Charter members, now you can enforce that Constitution. Now you've promulgated to the world. You let the world know that you exist, right? So that's what constitutions do for you. It gives you an opportunity under post-lumineum pro consanguinity to establish your statehood again, alright? Let's move on. Okay, so in Class 73, we're still going over Chapter 7 of the Act of Algiers of 1906, right? So we're really taking a deep dive based upon Article 121. It talks about depositing your international law with Madrid. And then I show you, right? Reference points to show you that France took over and now you deposit everything in the United Nations Charter, alright? Because that's the arrangement that was set up by France. And how could France have the power to do it? Because the Sultan gave them the power. And now that France and the Sultan stepped down, who was the successor now? Moor state governments, i.e. the Maghdi, i.e. the Sharifian authorities, right? That's your Moor state governments. We are the successors now of the empire, alright? So in Chapter 7, we're learning about these general provisions is the instructions. We're gonna learn a little bit more about instructions today because this is very important for the Moors to understand. If we don't check the boxes, we will not be considered what's called competent Moors, alright? Okay, so in Chapter 7, as we were starting to finish up, okay? Starting to finish up, we talked about Chapter 7. We got through Articles 120 to 123, right? We finished the reading, okay? So now, what we need to do is get an understanding of the additional protocols. There were additional protocols that were assessed to the Act of Algiers. We'll read through it relatively quickly and then we'll move on past the additional protocols, alright? Okay, mother, if you can read the additional protocols of the Act of Algiers of 1906.
Additional protocol. On the point of signing the General Act of the Conference of Algiers, the delegates of Germany, Austria-Hungary, Belgium, Spain, the United States of America, France, Great Britain, Italy, the Netherlands, Portugal, Russia, and Sweden. Taking into account the declaration of the delegates of Morocco that they were not for the present in position to affix their signatures thereto, they being unable owing to the distance to receive an early reply from His Sharifian Majesty concerning the points in regard to which they deemed it their duty to refer to him. Reciprocally engaged by virtue of their respective full powers to unite their efforts towards the ratification of the said General Act in its entirety by His Sharifian Majesty and towards the simultaneous enforcement of the reforms therein provided, which are interdependent. They therefore agreed to charge His Excellency, Mr. Ma Musi, Minister of Italy, to Morocco and Dean of the Diplomatic Corps at Tangier, to take the necessary steps to that end by calling the attention of His Majesty the Sultan to the great advantages that his empire would derive from the stipulations adopted at the conference by the unanimous action of the signatory powers. The adhesion given by His Sharifian Majesty to the General Act of the Conference of Algiers shall be communicated through the government of His Catholic Majesty to the governments of the other signatory powers. This adhesion shall have the same force as if the delegates of Morocco had affixed their signatures to the General Act and will take the place of ratification by His Sharifian Majesty. In witness thereof, the delegates of Germany, Austria-Hungary, Belgium, Spain, the United States of America, France, Great Britain, Italy, the Netherlands, Portugal, Russia, and Sweden have signed the present additional protocol and affixed their seals thereto. Done at Algiers on the 7th day of April 1906 in a single copy, which shall remain filed in the archives of the government of His Catholic Majesty and of which certified copies shall be delivered to the signatory powers through the diplomatic channel.
Okay, mother, thank you very much. Okay, what's the additional protocol about? This is the full ratification by the Sultan. Now that the signatory powers have signed this contract, i.e. the treaty, right? Who's last to sign it? The superior, right? So the subordinates of all signs, the 12 signatory powers have signed the Act, right? I.e. the contract. Now they're waiting on the Sultan to sign it, right? So the Sultan is now communicating to make sure all the 12 signatory powers have signed it before the Sultan says, "Okay, through his adhesion, i.e. by his decree, he shall say the Act now shall be," through his firming, right? Through his firming, right? The fiat, fiat's in order, right? Through his decree, through his judgment, he has the power of the pen to say, "Now, the contract is valid." Without the Sultan saying it's valid, it's not valid, right? In order to have a contract, two parties have to say, "It's now enforced," right? But let me show you how powerful the Sultan was. Okay. Additional protocols of the Act of Algiers of 1906. On the point of signing the General Act of Conference of Algiers, the delegates of Germany, Austria-Hungary, Belgium, Spain, the United States of America, France, Great Britain, Italy, Netherlands, Portugal, Russia, and Sweden. Who are these? The 12 signatory powers, right? Taking into account the declaration of the delegates of Morocco that they were not for the present in position to affix their signatures thereto. So what's happening? The ambassadors, right? The Minister of Foreign Affairs on behalf of Morocco, as you're gonna learn, was not given permission to sign the contract on behalf of the Sultan. But they're there to represent the Sultan. But the Sultan didn't give them permission to sign it, okay? That's what we're learning. Keep in mind, okay, listen. Start taking it from top. Taking into account the declaration of the delegates of Morocco that they were not for the present in position to affix their signature thereto, they being unable owing to the distance to receive an early reply from His Sharifian Majesty concerning the points in regards to which they deemed it their duty to refer to him. So now they're contacting the Sultan and say, "Hey, all the colonists signed it. What do you want to do, Sultan?" Sultan says, "Don't sign it. I got it from here." Now keep in mind, all the ministers, plenipotentiaries, the ambassadors, the minister of foreign affairs for the 12 signatory powers have already signed it. But the Sultan is telling his, his minister of foreign affairs, et cetera, "Don't sign it," right? They did what? They referred to the Sultan to take it from here, okay? Listen. Reciprocally engaged by virtue of their respective full powers to unite their efforts towards the ratification of the said General Act. Ratification means what? In order to bring it to full power, right? Towards the said General Act in its entirety by His Sharifian Majesty and towards this simultaneous enforcement of the reforms therein provided, which are interdependent. So the Sultan is waiting around and say, "I'm gonna bless it in just a minute. Let it sit there and ponder for just a minute. Don't let my people sign it. They're waiting to hear from the Sultan directly." Now keep in mind, the signatory powers know that the Sultan already sent some, so the ambassadors, Mr. Foreign Affairs, to be there and sign off on it like everybody else. The Sultan said, "Hold up. Let it marinate for a minute," right? Let's continue, listen. They therefore agreed to charge His Excellency, Mr. Ma Musi, Minister of Italy to Morocco and Dean of the Diplomatic Corps at Tangier, to take the necessary steps to that end by calling, calling, calling the attention of His Majesty the Sultan to the great advantages that his empire would. Okay, so whose empire is it? His, the Sultan. But now if the Sultan stepped down, whose empire is it now? Moors governments, right? Because the whole time, the Sultan has been overseeing the empire and now he stepped down in 1956, the successor automatically is the Moors governments, alright? Continuing. So it derived from the stipulations adopted at the conference by the unanimous action of the signatory powers. So all the signatory powers signed it, okay? Now here's what part you have to understand. Here's where the Sultan gets involved. The adhesion given by His Sharifian Majesty to the General Act of the Conference of Algiers shall be communicated through the government of His Catholic Majesty to the governments of the other signatory powers. So what's happening? So the Pope kind of sort of represents the European powers, right? Then you got the Sultan. So you got the Sultan, then you got the Pope. The Pope kind of oversees the European powers and the Sultan oversees the entire empire. So now, Catholic Majesty and the Sultan are talking directly on the phone. And the Sultan turns around and tells the Catholic Majesty, "Yeah, I bless it. Go ahead and run with it. Matter of fact, I'm not even gonna sign it. Y'all just gonna adhere to it. I'll prove that to you." Listen. The adhesion, what's the adhesion? The verbal process say, right? So let's go back up. Article 121. What's the adhesion? Article 121. Okay, let's go back up. Article 121. So Article 121, right? Right here. A process verbal. So the adhesion, okay, going back down, the adhesion is the Sultan now speaking directly to them. So the Majesty now giving his adhesion what? His verbal order. That the contract is now been fully ratified. Listen. The adhesion given by His Sharifian Majesty to the General Act of the Conference of Algiers shall be communicated through the government of His Catholic Majesty to the governments of the signatory powers. Sultan didn't even want to talk to them. He talked directly to their laws, right? Said, "This adhesion shall have the same force as if the delegates of Morocco had affixed their signature to the General Act and will take the place of ratification by His Sharifian Majesty." With a phone call, he said, "Let it be. Ache," right? "Let the decision carry out," right? Listen. In witness whereof, the delegates of Germany, Austria-Hungary, Belgium, Spain, the United States of America, France, Great Britain, Italy, the Netherlands, Portugal, Russia, and Sweden have signed the present additional protocol and affixed their seal thereto. So everybody's signing except for who? The Sultan. The Sultan called up, or should I say, the Catholic Majesty calls the Sultan. And the Pope tells the Sultan, "Yeah, everybody's signing." The Pope turns around and gets permission from the Sultan to do what? Go tell all the signatory powers it's in full force just by his verbal command. Now watch this. Done at Algiers on the 7th day of April 1906 in a single copy, which shall remain filed in the archives of the government of His Catholic Majesty and which certified copy shall be delivered to the signatory powers through the diplomatic channel. Now look who signed it. Germany, you see? Now look. Here's Germany, right? And they have plenty, plenty potentuiaries or the minister of foreign affairs signed it, right? For Germany, on behalf of Germany, right? So Germany signed it, Austria-Hungary signed it, Belgium signed it, Spain signed it, the United States of America signed it, okay? Who else? France, right? France, Great Britain, Italy, Morocco. There's nobody. No signature. That's how powerful the Sultan was. This is 1906. This wasn't 300 years ago. It's 1906. Sultan didn't even need to sign it, but he made everybody adhere to it.
But he gave a verbal to the Pope who gave a verbal okay to all the others, because of all the Christian powers.
That's right. That's how powerful the pen is of the empire. That sometimes we don't even need to sign it just by our own decree. If we're sitting in the proper offices, it can take place by proclamation, by executive order. That's how powerful we are as Moors. Listen. Netherlands signed it, Portugal signed it, Russia signed it, right? I.e. Soviet Union. Sweden signed it, right? Okay? So if all these people signed it and Morocco never signed it, it is still in force. What does that, that should tell you how powerful we are? That not only do we have the power, the pen, we have the power just by decree. And it's still in force. Which is very good. Okay, so now that we know about the additional protocols, how powerful this is, let's now go back up and find out what the United States of America thought about this. Now that they signed it, right? Let's take, let's take a look at it, okay? So let's, let's get into this. So we all know the General Act of 1906, the Act of Algiers, was ratified, deposited, promulgated, the United States, all the instructions, right? They put it right in front of your face, right? Well, let's, let's see what the President of the United States of America thought about it. So it's a proclamation by the United States of America and the United States International Organization, which is a corporation, right? So let's see what Theodore Roosevelt thought about this in the year 1906. Okay, mother, start here.
Whereas a General Act and an additional protocol was concluded and signed on April 7, 1906 by the plenipotentiaries of the United States of America, Germany, Austria-Hungary, Belgium, Spain, France, Great Britain, Italy, the Netherlands, Portugal, Russia, and Sweden, the originals of which General Act and additional protocol being in the French language are word for word as follows.
Alright, so what we learned so far? The title is what? The President of the United States of America. But this is 1906. But they changed their name to the United States in 1871. So if they change their name to the United States, right? As a legal personality, why is the President still pretending, Theodore Roosevelt pretending that he's still the President of the United States of America? It's because the United States of America has a name, Moors. The United States of America is the name on the contract. So in order for them to enforce and be able to stay in Morocco, they gotta keep pretending like they're still the United States of America because that's the name on the contract. The United States is not on the contract as a name. Only the United States of America's on the contract. You can only enforce a contract if your name is on it. The United States as a single name is not on the contract. Alright, this'll make sense to you. Okay, let's go on down, finish the reading just more.
And whereas the said General Act and additional protocol were signed by the plenipotentiaries of the United States of America under reservation of the following declaration. The government of the United States of America having no political interest in Morocco and no desire or purpose having animated it to take part in this conference other than to secure for all peoples the widest equality of trade and privilege with Morocco and to facilitate the institution of reforms in that country tending to ensure complete cordiality of intercourse without and stability of administration within for the common good declares that in acquiescing in the regulations and declarations of the conference in becoming a signatory to the General Act of Algiers and to the additional protocols subject to ratification according to constitutional procedure and in accepting the application of those regulations and declarations to American citizens and interests in Morocco, it does so without assuming obligation or responsibility for the enforcement thereof. And whereas in giving its advice and consent to the ratification of the said General Act and additional protocol, the Senate of the United States resolved as a part of this act of ratification that the Senate understands that the participation of the United States in the Algiers Conference and in the formulation and adoption of the General Act and protocol which resulted therefrom was with the sole purpose of preserving and increasing its commerce in Morocco. The protection as to life, liberty, and property of its citizens residing or traveling therein and of aiding by its friendly offices and efforts in removing friction and controversy which seemed to menace the peace between the powers signatory with the United States to the Treaty of 1880, all of which are on terms of amity with this government and without purpose to depart from the traditional American foreign policy which forbids participation by the United States in the settlement of political questions which are entirely European in their scope. And whereas the said General Act and additional protocol were duly ratified by the governments of the United States of America and of the other powers aforesaid and by His Majesty the Sultan of Morocco. And whereas in pursuance of Article 121 of the said General Act, the ratifications of the said General Act and additional protocol of all the signatory powers were deposited with the government of His Majesty the King of Spain on December 31, 1906, thereby constituting a valid exchange of the ratification thereof. Now therefore be it known that I, Theodore Roosevelt, President of the United States of America, have caused the said General Act and additional protocol to be made public to the end that the same and every article and clause thereof may be observed and fulfilled with good faith by the United States and the citizens thereof. and the citizens thereof, subject to the reservation made in the aforesaid Declaration of the Plenipotentiaries of the United States and to the resolution of the Senate. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the United States of America to be hereunto affixed, done at the city of Washington this twenty-second day of January in the year of our Lord one thousand nine hundred and
Seven.
Seven. And of the independence of the United States of America, the one hundred and thirty-first. Theodore Roosevelt, by the President Elouw Root, Secretary of State.
All right, so Theodore Roosevelt's the President, Elouw, Elouw Root was the Secretary of State, right? Okay, so that was a lot of reading. What was the President talking about? Let's go back and comprehend. He told you a lot of gems here, right? He's telling you why they signed the Act of Al-Dusers. Gotta pay close attention, even though it's self-evident. Okay. From Theodore Roosevelt, nineteen oh six, nineteen oh seven, right? Now keep in mind, let's go back to the top. Go back to the top. Who ratified, deposed, and promulgated the Constitution? Cause they keep talking about the United States of America, right? Isn't that what they said? The United States of America, right, go down, said the President of the United States of America, right? But yet, who ratified, deposed it? Okay, signed at Al-Dusers, April seven nineteen oh six, okay. Ratification advised by the Senate, December twelfth nineteen oh six, all right. Ratified by the President of the United States. December fourteenth nineteen oh six. Wait a minute. But I thought the proclamation came from the President of the United States of America. This is that duality that they're operating under two legal personalities. See, they operate as the United States of America, all caps, but they also operate as the United States, and that's the seal of the United States Municipal Corporation. But when you look at the treaties, which is the contract, when you look at the Constitution, they tell you on the front of their constitutions, the Constitution of the United States of America. That's what they say on the first page, right? The first page, right, of the cover. But as soon as you start to read the Constitution, I'll read aloud. Let's go to the first article. Article one, shall we? All legislative powers herein granted shall be vested in the Congress of the United States, which shall consist of a Senate and House of Representatives. But the cover says, "United States of America." Article one says, "The legislation is about the United States." Well, let's dive into that, right? So we got two legal personalities. What's happening? Here's what's happening. When we go back over to now, the treaty. The United States of America's gonna start to confess as to why they signed this in the first place. This is very important, why we need to understand this. And whereas the said general act and additional protocols were signed by the Plenipotentiaries of the United States of America under reservation of following declaration. Quote, "The government of the United States of America having no political interest in Morocco and no desire or purpose having animated to take part in this conference other than to secure for all peoples the widest equality of trade and privilege with Morocco and to facilitate the institutional reforms in that country." What country? Morocco is the empire. Tending to ensure complete cordiality or intercourse without and stability of administration within for the common good declares that in acquiescing, so the United States of America acquiesced, they consented, they agreed in the regulations and declarations of the conference, what conference? The Act of Al-Dusers, the contract, the treaty. In becoming a signatory to the General Act of Al-Dusers and to the additional protocol, subject to ratification, they gotta go back and follow instructions, according to the constitutional procedure, right? So they're talking about the United States of America.
Why does he, why does it say that the United States of America has no political interest in Morocco?
Okay, that's a good question, Mum. We'll get back to that, okay? Good question. So let's, let's take it from here. The General Act of Al-Dusers and to the additional protocol subject to ratification according to the constitutional procedure and in accepting the application of those regulations and declarations to American citizens and interests in Morocco. It does so without assuming obligation or responsibility for the enforcement thereof. Well, who's not assuming? Obligation. The United States of America. The United States of America can't assume obligation. So the United States of America signed it on April seventh nineteen oh six. But through ratification, they had to bring it back to the United States, Washington DC, ten miles square, to let who take a look at it? The United States, right? Let's go back to it. Who has to take a look at it now? The United States government, the municipal corporation. Cause the United States of America signed it on an international level with the Sultan, nineteen oh six. Then they had to bring it back to Washington DC and let the United States take a look at it. Why is that? Because there's no President of the United States of America. There's no legislative branch of the United States of America. There's no judicial branch of the United States of America. There's only an executive legislative and judicial branch of the United States. We're gonna learn more about that today. So this is elementary. Let's keep going. Listen. And whereas in giving its advice and consent to the ratification of said general act and additional protocol, the Senate, who's the Senate? The Senate, we got the Senate, House of Representatives of the United States, right? Washington DC, we got the Senate, House of Representatives. So the Senate has to ratify the treaty. They had to bring it back to the United States and sign off on it. And ratify, say it's gonna become a part of the law of the United States as well as the United States of America, two separate entities. Okay? Same from here. And whereas in giving its advice and consent to the ratification of the said general act and additional protocol, the Senate of the United States. Wait, I thought it was the United States of America. No, it's the United States, two separate entities. Resolved as a part of this act of ratification, so who's ratifying the treaty? Is the United States of America the United States? It's the United States, not the United States of America, right? The United States resolved as a part of this act of ratification that the Senate understands that the participation of the United States in the Al-Dusers Conference and in the form, form, formulation?
Formulation.
Formulation and adoption of the general act and protocol which resulted therefrom has with the sole purpose of preserving and increasing its commerce in Morocco. So why did the United States of America and the United States sign the treaty? Here, they tell you why. It was done, what, what? Was with the sole purpose of preserving and increasing its commerce in Morocco. Cause the United States of America and the United States is in Morocco, they wanna maintain trade. Then they gonna continue to tell you why, I'll state it. Okay, it says, "The," right? "The protection as to life, liberty, and property of its citizens." This is why they signed the treaty, so why? Because their citizens lives depend on it, why? Cause citizens of the United States of America can't go back home. Their, their tenants in Morocco now. They're ex-patriots of Europe, so now they're just citizens of the United States of America. More specifically of the United States. After eighteen seventy-one, everybody technically is a citizen of the United States Municipal Corporation. Right? But how can you be a citizen of a corporation? You could be an employee. It's a little bit of fraud going on, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so watch. So why did they sign the treaty? For the protections as to life, liberty, and property of its citizens. Residing where? Residing or traveling therein. Therein of what? Morocco. So they're traveling in Morocco, therein, and abating by its friendly offices and efforts in removing friction and controversy which seem to menace the peace between the powers signatory with the United States to the Treaty of eighteen eighty. All of which are on terms of amity with this government and without purpose to depart from the traditional American foreign policy which forbids participation by the United States in the settlement of political questions which are entirely European in their scope. So the United States can't get involved with any opinions of what happens in Morocco, why? Because they're a municipal corporation, they're not a state. Corporations can't tell states what to do, right? The way. The mother was acting about, what is it about the United States of America can't have any political interest in Morocco? Well, here's why. Because everything the United States does, all the United States of America as American foreigners in Morocco is entirely European in their scope. What's that mean? Now you gotta know the history, right?
International.
International law. You have to understand the history. What happened? Okay, we all know that the United States of America colonized Morocco, right? But what else happened? This is the African colonization after the Berlin Conference of eighteen eighty-four. All of the Moors are familiar with this, right? This is the Berlin Conference of eighteen eighty-four. That's the history, right? So what happened in eighteen eighty-four? All the Christian powers, the signatory powers in eighteen eighty-four left Europe and started coming down to Africa, colonizing Africa in eighteen eighty-four. Right? So what happened? Okay, so who's colonizing Africa? Okay. So you got France, right? See, we'll get visual on that pretty good. We got France. France is in the light, light blue, right? France, light, light blue. Spain is dark blue. Great Britain is kind of this pinkish color, right? Here's Portuguese, yellow. Portuguese is right here, yellow. Portuguese, Portuguese, right? Here's Belgium in purple, right? Portuguese, more Portuguese, right, yellow. Here's Germany, right here. Germany is here, Germany's there, colonizing Africa, right? Here's France even way over here, right? Australia, et cetera, right? So you got all this Africa that's being carved up by the colonists. That's called in European scope. What's the scope? Colonization, right? So the United States of America is saying, the United States, nor the United States of America can have any interest in Morocco that appear to be entirely European in their scope. Scope of what? Colonizing Morocco, cause the treaty forbids it. This is what Moors have to understand. The Act of Al-Dusers of nineteen oh six is a decolonization agreement. It's a contract to decolonize Morocco. All seven chapters about decolonization, right? Let's prove that. Let's go back up. Okay, decolonization, right? So how do we know this is about decolonization? It's the Act of Al-Dusers nineteen oh six. Okay, so it says right here, in the preamble, it says, "Who furnished or the colonists furnished, furnished with full powers which were found in good and due form, have and conformly with the program upon which Sharifian Majesty and the powers have agreed, success, successfully discussed and adopted?" What did they adopt? A decolonization contract. How do you decolonize? They gonna give you the step by step in this contract. What's the first thing you gotta do? Okay, chapter one, a declaration relative to the organization of police. The Sultan says, "I got power, all police." What's chapter two? A regulation concerning what? The detection and repression of uncontrad性的arms. How do you decolonize? You take away the colonists' arms. You issue them permits. That's everything from their weapons of war all the way down to what? Weapons of sport, shotguns. So everything from a shotgun up to a nuclear weapon, our treaty gives us power over to decolonize. Cause they've been using use of force to hold on to our land. Okay, what's, what's chapter three? The Act of Concessions of a Moroccan State Bank. Now we get to take our money back, right? What's chapter four? A declaration concerning a better return of taxes and the recreation of new revenues. Who collects the taxes and revenue? Moors. That's how you decolonize, cause you control the money and the power. Chapter five, a regulation concerning the customs of the empire and the repression of fraud and smuggling. We control that. We repress fraud, smuggling. We enact laws to repress any fraud. That's decolonization. What's fraud? Tell the people they black. Chapter six, a declaration relative to public services and public works, right? So chapter six, we oversee what's public services? That's your legislative branch, judicial branch, right, and executive branch. That's public services. We take back over public service, meaning we take over the law. Once we take over the law and the law enforcement, now we gonna oversee public works. What's that? What's public works? That's taking over what? All utility companies, right? Roadways, everything. We take over everything, all the taxation, everything.
All the infrastructure.
All the infrastructure, right? Everything, right? Question?
Yeah, so when you say take over everything, so like even our, um, so I have a what am I trying to say? Regulation, Department DORA, like taking over something like that as well?
Yeah, so the Department Regulatory Agency, right, DORA. Department Regulatory Agencies is, is an agency, right? That's what. According to the Act of Al-Dusers, Article one twenty-three, DORA is what? An arrangement of a municipal corporation that's subordinate to the state of Colorado as a corporation. The state of Colorado has allowed DORA to register its municipal status with the state of Colorado as a corporation. But guess who the state of Colorado is registered to? The United States Municipal Corporation. And the United States Municipal Corporation is subordinate to who? The United States of America. The United States of America, according to the treaties, United States of America is subordinate to treaty to who? The empire. Who oversees the empire? Competent Moors states. And that's why we oversee DORA. But the Act of Al-Dusers is a decolonization agreement, contract, firming, decree. By who? The Sultan. But who did the Sultan represent? An office, the office of the empire. But he stepped down from that office. He left it vacated, absent. But yet, the empire still exists. Now the Moors are coming back to the competency, competency to take over the empire, cause we're next up. All right? That must be understood. Okay, let's get back there. Okay, so the United States of America has agreed through, through their own proclamation that they can't have any say in what goes on in Morocco. Why? Because they're subordinate to contract. That's why. Let's continue. And whereas the said general act and additional protocol were duly ratified by the governments of the United States of America and of other powers ever seen and by His Majesty the Sultan of Morocco, right? And by, right? So the United States of America said, the Sultan agreed, but yet the Sultan decided the contract. It's not powerful, the Sultan was, right? And whereas in pursuance of Article one twenty-one of the said general act, the ratification of the said general act and additional protocol of all signatory powers were deposited. So they follow instructions. What words? Ratification, depository. And what's the proclamation by Theodore Roosevelt? Promulgation. Promulgation means notification, publication, right? You see how they follow the instruction? We don't talk about instructions today. So, okay, start here. And whereas in pursuance of Article one twenty-one of the said general act, what is Article one twenty-one all about? That comes under what? Chapter seven. Articles one twenty to one twenty-three talks about what? The instructions, the proviso, the conditions. So the United States of America is telling you right here, we followed the instructions. Now we can enforce the Act of Al-Dusers. But they're also admitting that they're subordinate in the contract. Okay, starting here again. And whereas in pursuance of Article one twenty-one of the said general act, the ratification of the said general act and additional protocol, all the signatory powers were deposited with the government of his majesty, the King of Spain, on December thirty-first nineteen oh six, thereby constituting a valid exchange of the ratification thereof. Contract became valid, okay? Listen. Now therefore. Being known that I, Theodore Roosevelt, President of the United States of America, have caused the said general act and additional protocol to be made public to the end that the same and every article and clause thereof may be observed in fulfillment with good faith by the United States. Wait. United States, United States of America? He just said he's President of the United States of America. But he waiting on the United States to validate him. Validate what? The contract. Two different legal personalities. You know why he waiting for the United States to do it? Because the United States of America don't have a government. They do not have three brands of government. They have to leave it up to what? A municipal corporation to ratify. Okay. Let's start from the top. Now, therefore, being known that I, Theodore Roosevelt, planning to be President of the United States of America, have caused the said general act and additional protocol to be made public to the end that the, that the same that, and every article and clause thereof may be observed. So, every article of the Act of Outsetters shall be observed. They agreed. They consented. They acquiesced. Who needed to enforce it? Competent Moors states. Who also followed the instructions of what? Ratification, depository, promulgation. With who? United Nations Charter, Article one oh two, with the secretary. Okay, right here. With good faith by the United States and citizens thereof, subject to the reservation made in the aforementioned declaration of the plenipotentiaries of the United States and of the resolution of the Senate. The Senate of what? The United States. Not the Senate of the United States of America. Continue. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and call the seal of the United States of America to be hereon to affixed. Done at the City of Washington, this twenty-second day of January in the year of our Lord, one thousand nine hundred and seven. And of the independence of the United States of America, the one hundred and thirty-first day. Now, if you count back from nineteen oh seven. Back to, I think, approximately seventeen seventy-six. That's approximately what? One hundred and thirty-one days. Um, one hundred and thirty-one years, I should say. If you count back from nineteen oh seven to approximately seventeen seventy-six, when they declared their independence. Right? That's when they became independent, seventeen seventy-six. They signed the Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-seven. So, once again, Theodore Roosevelt reminding all of them, how did we get our independence? Because of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. That's why he's counting back these one hundred, one hundred and thirty-first year. Year, right, of what? Independence of who? The United States of America. Not the United States. The United States of America name is on the contract, not the United States. Now you see how they keep going back and forth interchangeably between these two legal personalities? Now do you understand when you look at the dollar, right? They call it the dollar. They say, the United States of America up top. Then right down here in small print, they say, of the United States. Because they don't want the people to know that these dudes, the Federal Reserve and their seven board members. Say that this is the great seal, the great seal of the United States. But they didn't say this is the great seal of the United States of America. Because the United States operates under the guise of the United States of America. And why do they do that? Because their name is still on the contracts and they want to enforce those contracts. If they were to abandon the name of the United States of America, the treaty would automatically terminate itself because the name don't exist no more. But they operate all around planet Earth under the name of the United States. Municipal corporation. Let's look into, Moors are familiar with this. This is the definition of what the United States define themselves as being, right? Moors are familiar with this. Title twenty-eight, United States Code subsection three thousand two definitions. Section fifteen A. So, section fifteen says, United States means. Section fifteen A, A says, a federal corporation. So, the United States means a federal corporations according to their own code. That's how they define themselves. Look it up. Moors know about this, okay? So, if the United States is a federal corporation. Right? But yet, they all take their oath to the United States. But why do they take their oath to the United States? Well, we talked about this, right? Elementary. Because the Act, Act, right? The Act of Congress of eighteen seventy-one, it's refreshing. I'm gonna go over this for a reason. You'll see why. So, the forty, forty-first Congress Session Three, Chapter sixty-two, right? Eighteen seventy-one says, the United States of America. Listen. The United States of America in Congress assembled, then what? Created the United States in eighteen seventy-one. For what? For what? For a body corporate, for municipal corporation. They created a body corporate. For municipal corporations, their statute. Right? For what? Municipal, it's so, so for, so they created for body corporate for municipal purposes, right? Because they're a municipal corporation. Acting under the name of the United States and now they create a constitution and laws underneath the United States. Why is this important to understand? Because as we start to enforce our state rights as Moors. The parties must be known. What about the parties? Okay. We already know, we're starting to find out they're taking their oath to the United States, right? But if the Moors themselves don't follow the instructions, then knowing all this history means absolutely nothing. You can't enforce it if you yourself are incompetent and not following the instructions, right? So what happened? Let, let's take a look at these instructions real quick. So what happened? This is the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of seventeen eighty-six, seventeen eighty-seven. What did the United States of America do with the, with, um, with the Sultan? Right? So they established this treaty, right? What was the first thing they did? Here's the instructions. First of all, the Treaty of Peace and Friendship was sealed in Morocco with the seal of the Emperor of Morocco, June twenty-third seventeen eighty-six. And delivered to Thomas Barclay, American agent, June twenty-eighth seventeen eighty-six. Original in Arabic. Listen, the additional article was signed, signed ratified, signed ratified and sealed in Morocco. On behalf of Morocco, July fifteenth seventeen eighty-six. That's when the Sultan signed it. That's ratification. Now listen. Here's the next instruction. Treaty and additional article ratified by the United States, July eighteen seventeen eighty-one. As to the ratification generally, see the notes. Treaty and additional article proclaimed, July eighteenth seventeen eighty-seven. So you see what they're doing? They, they signed it. And they ratified it. And they proclaimed promulgation. They were following instruction even seventeen eighty-seven. Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Okay, let's move on to next. Then, in seventeen eighty-nine, George Washington changes the name from the Constitution of Congress. In seventeen eighty-nine, he sends a letter to the Sultan, right? So, George Washington, in seventeen eighty-nine, sends a letter to who? C. Muhammad, Sultan of Morocco, right? December first seventeen eighty-nine. What does he do? He says, since the date of the letter, which the late Congress, by their present address to your Imperial Majesty, the United States of America, have thought proper to change their government and to institute a new one. Agreeable to the constitution of which I have the honor of herewith enclosing a copy. Why did he enclose a copy sent to the Sultan? That's called depository. They're promulgation, they're following instructions. What's next? Eighteen thirty-six, Treaty of Peace and Friendship. United States is following instructions. Listen. Peace and Friendship Treaty sealed by the Emperor of Morocco, Magen E, September sixteenth eighteen thirty-six. And signed, ratified. For the United States, October first eighteen thirty-six. Sent in advice and consent to ratification, January seventeenth eighteen thirty-seven. Ratified by the President of the United States, January twenty-eighth eighteen thirty-seven. Entered into force, January twenty-eighth eighteen thirty-seven. Proclaimed, promulgated, proclaimed, promulgated by the President of the United States, January thirtieth eighteen thirty-seven. They're following instructions. Listen. Round protection in Morocco, Treaty of Madrid. Convention signed in Madrid, July third eighteen eighty. Effective from July third eighteen eighty. Ratification, exchanged at ten year, May first eighteen eighty-one. Sent in advice and consent to ratification, May fifth eighteen eighty-one. Ratified by the President of the United States, May tenth eighteen eighty-one. Proclaimed by the President of the United States, December twenty-first eighteen eighty-one. Ratification of the United States, deposited ten year, March ninth, not eighteen eighty-two, right? Ratification, depository, promulgation, they're following instructions. Right? Okay. And we already know about the Act of Outsetters, they follow the same instructions, right? Now wait a minute. Why haven't the Moors done this? Why isn't the colonists doing something the Moors haven't done? Because we don't follow instructions. And we were unaware of the instructions. But now that we're aware of the instructions, now we can enforce our constitutions and treaties. Okay, listen. This is ADPAC's constitution. This is our seal constitution as an example. All the Moors will need to do this as an example, listen. So what did ADPAC do as an example? What did we do? Okay. Based upon our law restoration, post-limineum per consanguine. What did we do? Number one, ADPAC constitution was ratified on February twenty-eighth twenty twenty-one. Our constitution was deposited and promulgated with the USA and the United States on March twentieth twenty twenty-one. Number three, constitution deposited with the UN Charter Secretary on August twenty-first twenty twenty-one. The Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-seven was deposited on August twenty-first twenty twenty-one. With who? United Nations Charter, Article one oh two, we're following instructions. So, ADPAC turned around and deposited what? The Treaty of Peace and Friendship eighteen thirty, eighteen thirty-six was deposited on August twenty-first twenty twenty-one. Right? So what did we do first with these treaties? We ratified, now we're depositing and promulgating, we're following instructions. This is ADPAC. This is all the Moors have to do. Listen. So we ratified, deposited and promulgated the Treaty of Act of Outsetters nineteen oh six. Right? It was deposited on August twenty-first twenty twenty-one. Number eight, ratified, deposited treaties. And ADPAC constitution was promulgated via competent counsel court decrees against the United States of America and the United States on March fifteenth twenty twenty-two. What happened? Our counsel court. Me being the chief judge of counsel court. ADPAC has already sent ministerial decrees, i.e. orders, to the United States of America. As of March fifteenth twenty twenty-two. To do what? Decolonize. It has begun. Listen. Number nine, decolonization is in full progress in conformity with the, with international law. The general provisions of Chapter Seven of the Act of Outsetters within ADPAC's ultiposited jurisdiction and throughout the empire of Morocco. Because other Moors states are now ratifying, depositing, promulgating their state constitution. They're ratified, depositing, promulgating the treaties. They're following the same instructions that the colonists follow. Why do the colonists follow those instructions? Because these instructions are set for international law. It's what you call the customary norms of international law. So now, ADPAC is to enforce these against who? The United States of America, who already agreed, who already resolved, who already acquiesced and agreeing to the contract of the Act of Outsetters. In which Article one twenty-three says what? That Moors state governments have what? Jurisdiction over all treaties, conventions and arrangements. Period. What's happened? Okay. This is Theodore Roosevelt's inauguration. Okay, it's on YouTube. This is a reenactment. Because if you try to go back and look at the nineteen oh six actual footage, you can't hear a word he's saying. It's just black and white, right? Nineteen oh six. So reenact it, let's listen to it. Who's he taking his oath to? Let's find out, right?
Nineteen oh one. The Pan-American Exposition, which had made Buffalo the focus of the world's attention since its opening that May.
So in nineteen oh one.
On this day, as President William McKinley hosted a public reception in the Temple.
So William McKinley, the president, gets assassinated, okay? Theodore Roosevelt then takes over. He was the vice president, okay? Alright, let's see what he talks about now.
Assembling in the library to witness the ceremony included cabinet members, politicians, community leaders, reporters, and members of the Wilcox family. At exactly three thirty-two PM, Secretary of War, Elihu Ru, approached the Vice President. Out assembling in the library to witness the ceremony included cabinet members, politicians, community leaders, reporters, and members of the Wilcox family. At exactly three thirty-two PM, Secretary of War, Elihu Ru, approached the Vice President.
Mr. Vice President, I have been requested by the Cabinet of the late President, at least those who were present in Buffalo, all except two. To request that for reasons of weight affecting the affairs of government, that you proceed to take the constitutional oath of President of the United States. I shall take the oath at once in accordance with your request. And in this hour of deep and terrible bereavement, I wish to state it shall be my aim to continue absolutely unbroken the policy of President McKinley for the peace and prosperity and honor of our beloved country.
United States Federal District Court Judge John R. Hazel had been summoned to the Wilcox home.
So wait. So Theodore Roosevelt is about to take his oath to who? The United States, but the United States is a corporation. And now he says he can take his oath from who? A judge, right? But who did the judge take his oath to in order for him to get an oath to the Vice President Theodore Roosevelt before he take the office? Okay. What did he say? Let's listen.
Our beloved country.
United States Federal District Court Judge John R. Hazel had been summoned to the Wilcox home to administer the oath of office.
Vice President.
So the judge also works for who? The United States. He took his oath to the United States, meaning all their judges are what? Administrators of a corporation and not of a state. So they're all giving oaths to each other under the auspices of the United States of America. They really taking their oath to who? The United States Municipal Corporations. Why is this important as we continue to listen? Because when Moors state governments that are competent take their contentious, contentious disputes to the International Court of Justice, we may prove that they are a corporation and not a state. Why? Because we got all kind of evidence that proves that they are not a state of the United States of America no more. Listen.
Roosevelt, would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear. I do solemnly swear. That I will faithfully execute. That I will faithfully execute. The office of President of the United States. The office of President of the United States. And will to the best of my ability. And will to the best of my ability. Preserve, protect and defend. Preserve, protect and defend. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And thus I do swear. For almost two.
So all the presidents since eighteen seventy-one have taken their oath to the United States. and the United States is a federal corporation by their own codes and statutes. So when the Moors take them to the International Court of Justice, we're approved to their corporation. And we will win easily against them. Why? Because in their own proclamation, they said they can't have no interest, no say in what goes on in Morocco. Why? For two reasons. One, they're subordinating the contract. Two, it's because now they diminished themselves from being organic, United States of America prior to eighteen seventy one. And anything after eighteen seventy one, they've been a corporation ever since. Which means they can't even get into any diplomatic disputes with a state. A corporation can't tell a state what to do. Only a state can tell a corporation what to do. You gotta understand the trick back they put themselves into. Treaty is already supreme law of the land, okay? Listen. I thought I had their constitution of. But I, there it is. The Constitution of the United States of America, Article six and the Constitution of the United States. Article six. Why do I say both? Because they write in both languages in here. They mention both legal personalities on the front cover, says United States of America. When we open up, start read the articles, they take their oath to who? The United States. A duality contract they wrote after eighteen seventy one. Okay, so listen. Article six. Now that they've taken their oath to the United States municipal corporation, listen. Article six, all debts contracted engagement entered into before the adoption of this constitution shall be as valid against the United States. So all our contracts, what contracts? All contracts and engagements, what are the treaties? Entered into before the adoption of this constitution shall be as valid against the United States under this constitution as under the Confederation. Listen. This constitution and the laws of the United States which shall be made and pursued thereof in all treaties made or which shall be made such as the Act of Altusseris of nineteen oh six under the authority of the United States shall be the supreme law of the land. So what's the supreme law of the land according to their constitutions? Treaties. And who's bound themselves to it? The United States and the United States of America. And the judges in every state, see they got the lowercase s? Cause they know their charters and corporations. Shall be bound thereby, so their judges are bound to what? Treaties. The judges in every state shall be bound thereby anything in the constitution or laws of any capital S state. To the contrary notwithstanding. So anything they do that supervenes the impossibility of our treaties, they become a party too. Cannot stand. Nothing they say can stand against our treaties, cause they said our treaties supreme law of the land. Well, guess who else is bound to it other than their judges? Okay. Clause three. Those senators and representatives before mentioned and the members of the several state legislators, lowercase s, and all executive and judicial officers, both of the United States and other several states. Look how they put the capital S here, lowercase s there. See, they know what's happening. So all their judges, all their senators, all their representatives, right? And the executive branch who that? Presidents. Are bound to what? Treaties. As the supreme law of the land. And it continues, other several states shall be bound by oath or affirmation to support this constitution. And by them taking, taking an oath to the Constitution rather than the Constitution of the United States or the Constitution of the United States of America, they're all bound to what? The treaties. And cause treaties shall be the supreme law of the land. And when they sign the Act of Altusseris of nineteen oh six and its seven chapters, it's a decolonization contract that Moors did not know how to enforce. But now that we are following the instructions of chapter seven of the Act of Altusseris of nineteen oh six, Article one twenty to one twenty three, because even the United States mentioned Article one twenty one in their proclamation. They said that's where the instructions are in order to do what? Enforce the treaty and your constitution. So now start to wrap up. What, what should we take away from this? We gotta get out of our feelings. We gotta stop blaming the colonists. They already know what they've done wrong. My question to the Moors is, what have we done right in a competent manner? We have delayed our own justice while the United States of America and the, the United States international corporation have been running amok. All because we didn't know how to use our Excalibur. We never pulled, picked up the pen and used it in a competent way through a competent constitution. And some of the Moors right now still think to themselves that divinity is the answer to the test. No, that's when you wake up and come out of your stupor from being black. You are still a black of Moore if you have not returned to Morocco through a competent Moore state. You've just gone from being black to being a Moore. And guess what? When you go from being black to a Moore, you go out and get your fans and you change your name, you tell everybody you competent. Guess what you just did? If you didn't return to Morocco by following the instructions of the treaties of the, of the Matreid Convention, Article fifteen, paragraph one, guess what you just did? You just went from the pan right into the fire. You didn't go from the pan and higher, you went from the pan to the fire. Why? Because the United States don't recognize your Kendrick Bay. Why don't they recognize your Kendrick Bay? It's because no Moore state recognized Kendrick Bay. Cause you didn't follow the instructions. Which makes Kendrick Bay stateless, i.e. an alien, cause nobody recognizes Kendrick Bay on the record. Cause no Moore state recognizes Kendrick Bay. We hadn't been following the instructions. So you went from being black in the pan and jumped in the fire. Black people got civil rights. Morse Americans don't have no rights through an alien. All because we didn't follow the instructions. We thought it was all about divinity and it is. But Noble Drouli said what? The other half ain't been told. And what's the other half, other half, Noble? Statehood. This is why he wrote a constitution. But unfortunately, he didn't check the rest of the boxes of ratification, depository and promulgation. Which meant his constitution ended up being private law instead of public law, cause it was not what? Inconformity to international law. Noble Drouli wrote his constitution after nineteen thirteen. The Act of Altusseris came out in nineteen oh six. Noble had an obligation to follow instructions just like the Moors of the twenty first century. And if we don't learn the lesson of yesteryear, we're doomed to repeat the same thing again. And what's the definition of insanity? Doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result. So what are we gonna do different this time, Moors? I got a, I got a suggestion. How about we follow the instructions of our own Moors treaties? Learning history, law and history goes together. So once we understand the law and the history, now we understand how to correct our wrongs. We've always some, known something was wrong, but we didn't know how to correct it.
Right.
Now we do. But who needs to correct it? Us. It's Islam. Acronym, I, self, law, am, master. Master of what? Self. What about self? Self-discipline to follow the instructions. We have waited long enough. It's time to stop procrastinating. It's time to do what? Stop procrastination and get into legislation. Legislation of what? Enforcing what? The triple principle. The triple principle about what? Sovereignty, independence, integrity domains and economic liberty without any inequality. That's the preamble of the Act of Altusseris. So now that we've gotten to the end of the reading of the Act of Altusseris, we have no more excuses. It's time for now for us to uplift fallen humanity in a competent way. I am with that. Islam.